Hi, my name's Kathy Klein. I live on Daisy Lane, thank you. They've mentioned, uh, security will be provided upon request. And I don't know how many people in the board have had daughters get married and had to pay for weddings, but you try to cut things down, you figure, okay, well, I don't, I'm not gonna request that because that's gonna cost money. Well, my husband travels and I'm home all alone and my property line does butt up against this property. And I'm gonna feel very uncomfortable with loud parties where I don't know if somebody's bringing in a gun and people are drinking and I'm home all by myself and there's no security there. I just would like that being addressed of how come security is not mandatory during 150 to 200 people coming there? Thank you.
Thank you. Bless you. Evening.
Evening. My name is Vanessa Woolcreek. I live at West 227 South 4655 Patricia Lane. Um, I'd just like to expand a little bit on Mr. Bowman's comments that, um, this is a change in the use of the property to make it commercial. This is a commercial enterprise in a residential area. That's a fact. Um, they're intending to make money and where they're gonna make money is to rent the venue. Maybe they'll get something from the catering, but they're gonna rent the venue and they're going to sell alcohol. A large portion of their revenue is gonna come from the sale of alcohol. I haven't seen much fact as to how they're going to prevent that alcohol sales from creating a nuisance, drunken driving. Yes, there will be shuttles. Yes, there will be Ubers. But if somebody decides to take an Uber home, their car will sit there until tomorrow or until when? Who's, who's gonna take care of that? There will be people drinking too much because it's a celebration. It's reasonable to expect that there will be people that drink too much that are boisterous, happy, having fun. If there isn't security present, who's gonna make sure that that noise isn't a nuisance? They can control the music, but they can't really control their patrons unless they have their own security there, which is not their intention at this point. So I haven't seen any evidence of how they will keep those nuisances in check. And once again, this is a residential neighborhood. It's a neighborhood where people come to live and raise their children and live in comfort and security. This doesn't fit that. And I think that's a fact from my perspective, and maybe that's just my perspective, but it is a fact that it's a residential area and this is a money-making business. Um, thank you very much.
Thank you.
I'm Amy Moore and I reside at S-50, W-23420 Woodchuck Lane. Um, I can tell you that 75 decibels sounds like a vacuum cleaner running or a toilet flushing. And that's not something I'd wanna have on my property line seven days a week. Also, I'd like to make the point that the hours have increased from weekends only in the first proposal to seven days a week until 11 o'clock on school nights, Sunday through Thursday. And those are all facts, including the toilet flushing. Thank you.
Thank you.
Please? I think it would be helpful.
Well, the problem, he's asked me to explain again about substantial evidence, meaning, you know, facts and information other than merely personal preference and speculation, but there's a, there's another problem with the comments and it's not, it just isn't an explanation. The rule is if they show substantial evidence that they meet the 75 decibels, they get the permit. So to get up and complain about 75 decibels accomplishes nothing, in all due respect. It reinforces their case because you're saying that they proved to you that 75, they're gonna meet 75 decibels and that means the commission has to give them their permit because they've met one of the conditions. If they meet the requirements and they meet the conditions, they have a right to the permit. That's what the new law says. So by standing up, some of the people are standing up and supporting their, the petitioner's case and I don't think you gen, you necessarily realize that that's what you're doing. By standing up and saying this is on a arterial road, you're just giving them more substantial evidence that they meet that condition. So, I mean, we didn't write the law. We have to read the law and interpret the law and again, we apologize that you didn't, that the law changed since the last time you were here, but, and there, this will be adjourned and you will have an opportunity to come back and, and present substantial evidence. And I'm gonna tell ya, at their hearing last week, and I'm not saying right or wrong, at the hearing last week, there weren't as many residents. There were 30 to 40 of them and many of them waited to speak till next month because they were gonna go home and do substantial evidence because they learned that giving their opinion wasn't gonna be valuable evidence anymore. And I, that's all I can say on it is that that's what the legislature said, that it can't be a popularity contest. It can't be, as somebody said, that a democracy or a republic, you know, that, that if the majority say that they don't want it, the board has to say no. Meet the requirements and the conditions, the board has to say yes.
The only other thing that I would, I would clarify if I could, beyond, beyond presenting substantial evidence as to whether or not they meet the requirements and the conditions of the ordinance, the board and plan commission have the right to impose other conditions on the proposed event venue. So if you have suggestions or ideas for what a reasonable condition might be, maybe you don't wanna see it, but if it were to be approved, a reasonable condition related to the parking or related to the noise or related to something else that could also be added on, you are, you are welcome to do that as well.
With the understanding that the legislature specifically said in 2A, any condition imposed must be related to the purpose of the ordinance and be based on substantial evidence. So it can't just be any condition afterward.
Correct, correct. It'd have to be related to the intent of the ordinance.
And they can't change the conditions that are requirements or conditions now.
No, they couldn't, they couldn't.
It says 75 decibels.
They couldn't say 65 decibels, but, but they could, they could have another condition that talked about, or they could suggest a condition. The conditions are ultimately being made by the board based on public input, but, but you certainly could suggest other things related to the development that might have an impact.
What's the procedure for that?
For what? Trying to show that my.
I'm so sorry.
Sir, Richard Shiger for, uh, Fountain 26, West 79, West Chuck Lane. Did they change the zoning laws as far as commercial? I worked in construction 40, 40 years. You wouldn't have to change the actual zoning laws to include this other stuff you got. Does it meet? To me, it's a straight commercial enterprise.
And, and sir, I'll answer that question for you. The law, yes, the town board decided in December, as indicated in the report, in December of 2016, that this, no one's denying it's not a, that it's not a commercial enterprise. No one, I don't know why everyone, I mean, there's no one here that's gonna say it's not a commercial enterprise.
So it should be.
It's allowed.
Commercial.
It's allowed in any zoning district. This commercial enterprise entitled event venue is by the laws of the Town of Waukesha, allowed in any zoning district.
So we can expect Walmart or Allgins?
An event venue, sir, is a commercial enterprise and it's allowed in, when we wrote the law, it was a privilege, not a right, and the board had the right to turn it down. The legislature changed the rules and gave us no time to rewrite the laws. And, and for those who wanna say it wasn't your legislator, it was the unanimous vote of the senate and the rep, and the House of, and the representatives at the state level. I was told that by one of the representatives the other day. So it, it wasn't one party or the other party that passed what is called the Property Owners' Bill of Rights. That's what they call this new law, Act 67. And I welcome all of you to, to, it's very easy to Google and you can read all of the aspects of the law and the handout that ran 100, everybody should have one, that's the pertinent section on conditional uses verbatim from the new law. The highlights and the bolding and the underline were mine. That's not, that's not in the new law. I wanted to make that clear. So for all of you to come up and say it's a commercial operation, you're absolutely right, it's a commercial operation, but it's allowed in any zoning district as an event venue, commercial operation, and it must be approved if they by substantial evidence show that they meet the requirements and the conditions and the proposed conditions. That's what the legislature handed us. And you can, we hate to tell you these horror stories, but it's true. In the village of Slinger, one of our clients, it was written up in all the papers, a petitioner asked for a mini warehouse, all the neighbors showed up and asked him to deny it, they denied it. The new law changed, a week later they applied again, they came back up and the mini warehouses were approved. It's an absolute fact, you can look it up in Slinger, you can call Slinger and tell them that that's what happened, but that's what happened. Because of the new law, they met by substantial evidence and the Slinger had to approve the mini warehouse. This is what's happening with the new law. Thank you.
Good evening.
Good evening, uh, everyone. My name's Peter Nello. My address is W-233 South 4940 Woodchuck Lane. Uh, you may recall, I was here last year like just about everyone else and I was very disappointed to see this back on the agenda again. And I don't have a lot of substantial evidence, as a matter of fact, I have a lot of commentary. Uh, I, I truly believe that this is going to impact the quality of life of the neighborhood and of the surrounding neighborhoods close to this, uh, proposed development. For some of the most, most of these are the obvious reasons. The glow of the lights. Think about those lights, what's gonna happen at night? What's gonna happen on foggy mornings and, or foggy nights? Think about how it's gonna glow when there's snow and ice on the ground. We're gonna see that. And combining that with 97 or 100 cars coming and going, or 100 plus cars coming and going, nobody's gonna like that. I used to live in the city of Waukesha. I came out here and I built 27 years ago because I wanted to have a nice dark evening at night. Yes, it's commentary, I don't have a lot of, a lot of, uh, evidence. The noise, we've all talked about it. Imagine opening up that door. Imagine a room this big and all these people talking and trying to talk over a band. It's not gonna be a fun place to live. It's gonna impact the quality of life in our neighborhood and the surrounding neighborhoods. I'll just say that I'm extremely concerned about 100 people leaving at 8 o'clock at night, or 9 o'clock at night. How about 10, 11, and 12 o'clock after consuming a lot of alcohol? Football field or two from where most of us live, that's gonna impact the quality of life for us. So that's my commentary. Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Hi, my name's Jim Porter. I live on South 47, West 22455 Lawnsdale Road. So far, I'm the only one here that lives on Lawnsdale Road that doesn't have a complaint. I think this venue, Wedding Barn, is going to be a plus-plus thing for our community. I think so. I hear people that have been up here before, they disagree with that. I happen to be farming here for 30 years and the traffic on Lawnsdale Road has gotten worse every year because of building. Not one building, but numerous buildings. The Belinsky subdivision came down and built 50, 75 homes right down the road from me on the farm that I was running, not owning, but running. The Bellman Company came down, took over the Belinsky operation and put another 40 homes in there on another piece of property that I was operating. And the traffic has been increasing year after year, not because of one building or one operation, but because of all the homes in the neighborhood and all the subdivisions that the people behind me live in. Nobody said anything about Lawnsdale Road but me. I live on that road. I drive on that road. My house is right on the road and I hear nothing but traffic go by morning and night. All winter long, I hear traffic coming from the garage. The lights are going around, the snow piles are plowing the roads. I have no complaint about that because they're doing things they're supposed to do to keep us safe on the road. So, I think since a lot of concerns are, are about the traffic, that is a no-brainer for me. The traffic just keeps on getting more and more and more every year and it's not because of one venue, it's because of the development in the neighborhood. This neighborhood is growing and it's growing in a good way and this venue would be a plus for all the neighborhoods, not just this neighborhood. I hear nothing but negativity. And I happen to farm that land for the couple of years in the back, in the past, and I am helping farm it now. And with the venue that's going in, I would not be losing any farmland. It's not taking up any farmland, it's just using what's there. The existing buildings or the new buildings are gonna be on where the existing buildings are. You're still gonna see asilos, asilos, you're still gonna see barns. It's gonna be something pleasant to look at, not another subdivision. I think we have enough subdivisions and if it's not gonna be a commercial use property, it might end up as another subdivision and that would be only good for the developers, not for the community. And not for farmers and not for me. And I think if people think about it long enough, they might reconsider the idea that it's gonna be a noisy thing. What's gonna be noisy is backyard parties for a neighbor that lives next door. Nobody lives next to this place. It's down a road and it's far from any neighbors. And if they have music, it's inside, not outside. And if they have the wedding outside and there's some violins or some other instruments playing, it's gonna be soft, enjoyable music. It's not gonna be like a hard rock band. And I just think that it would be a plus for our neighborhood to have a wedding barn or a whatever in our neighborhood. We have churches down the road, we have churches across the street, we have some farms left except for the ones that the development people sucked up or bought off. And, uh, I know that the people behind me all live in nice little subdivisions or dead-end streets. I live on Lawnsdale and it wouldn't bother me one bit to have another 100 cars go by my house. I'm already getting over 500 to 600 cars daily in front of my house, so the traffic is not a problem for me and the noise, I'll never hear it. Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Good evening.
Good evening. Uh, my name is Eric Sobosinski. Uh, my wife and I, we live at South 48, West 23440 Merlin Lane. Uh, we purchased our house a couple of years ago and, uh, been enjoying it ever since. Um, I have a couple of comments and inquiries in regards to the 75 decibels. I know it's been talked about a lot, so I'll try to. Um, I wanna know if that, uh, right now, the only way it's been talked about is in relation to music, DJ and anything like that. How do we know that all guests are gonna comply out in the parking lot? Um, meaning, everybody's been to a party or a wedding, you get a lot of people out there, people are loud. I mean, that could be just as loud as any music or anything. Um, how do you control gatherings in parking lots? Also, I'd like to know about the noise levels of equipment that are driving in. You're having food services or catering or things like that, do you leave your, these trucks running at night? Um, it's quiet otherwise, like somebody said, you know, normally vestable level would be next to zero, so just curious as to all that, how all that mixes in, as well as, uh, when people leave. People have habits of hitting their horn on their car, is where's my car? 100 parking spots, what road am I parked in? I can picture this with people on alcohol at midnight, walking out, going around like this, hey, where's my car? And I'm sorry, but I feel like that also is gonna be quite loud, especially with a lot of people leaving at once. How do you control that? And how do we know what to expect from that? Somebody else likened it to a vacuum cleaner. Um, there's lots of studies available as far as vestibles and things like that, but I'd like to know how these things all fit in, so.
Thank you. Thank you.
My name is John Lane. I live at S-49, W-2329 Zero Mill Creek Trail. Been a police officer for 30 years, so if you ask me if intoxicated drivers are gonna increase on Lawnsdale Road during the operation hours, that's, yes, that's, you know, we're not talking maybe, possibly, that's 100 percent. That's, we're gonna definitely have intoxicated drivers leaving that lot, um, maybe not meaningful, but to get to a .08, very, very simple. Um, I also think you're gonna probably have underage drinkers also at this property. There's no way to police it as far as the noise. Once this is approved, who's to say the noise won't go up to 150 decibels? How do you stop that? You gonna call the police and say, hey, there's too much noise, I think it's over 75 decibels? Police don't know that. They're even gonna turn around and go, hey, it's a wedding venue or it's a party venue, whatever the case may be, live with it. And that's what we're gonna be stuck with. If I really wanted to have a bar and, uh, a venue behind my house, I would've moved to West Alice. Uh, you know, I moved here to the Town of Waukesha. And if this is approved, one thing you're gonna have to change is that sign right behind John Merrick that says, Town of Waukesha, a great place to live. It's gonna have to say, Town of Waukesha, a great place to party.
Thank you.
Good evening. Sandy Hum, West 230, South 3827 Milky Way Road. Again, I wasn't really planning to speak. And for full disclosure, um, I've lived on Milky Way for over 25 years. Ken Miller is my neighbor, an acquaintance and a friend. Our children went to Rose Glen School together, so, um, you know, we're good friends. Um, I think the Act 67 thing is just so interesting here in this discussion. Um, it, it really flips everything. One of the things, you know, you talk about substantial evidence, but I, I read Act 67 and it also says that the conditions should be measurable. And, and I think that's more the crux of things than substantial evidence. Because how do you measure the quality of life? I mean, many people have gotten up here, it is, it is one of the conditions and yet I don't know how to measure it. So you're gonna have a hard job to decide what is substantial evidence for something to be measurable. And you can measure traffic, you can measure decibels, but it's not gonna be very easy. It isn't even easy to measure property values until properties start selling. Now, I have camera monitoring Milky Way Road. I can count the number of cars that go by every day, but I don't know how many cars will go by when the wedding venue comes. So I don't really have any substantial evidence. I would only have the evidence of what we have today. The same with the figures that Sean quoted. Those are just figures from the past. I wanted to bring up, and Ken and I talked in the parking lot, Nimby. When, I mean, the people that are here tonight, they live in this area, they live very close to this area generally, um, and that's who's here tonight. When Merrill Hills is on the agenda, it's a different group. When Five Diamonds was on the agenda, it was a different group. And everybody's looking out for themselves, no, none of these people were at the Five Diamonds meeting, maybe a couple of them, you, you, and, you know, I mean, you understand what's happening. And, and so when you get right down to Nimby, and I don't know if you can put it back up, Sean, but where does the driveway intersect with Milky Way? Because everyone's mentioning Lawnsdale, Big Bend, Guthrie, but I can tell you, the woman who talked about the deer hitting on Milky Way and another time when she went down Milky Way sober in the morning, she doesn't live on Milky Way, I don't think. There are hundreds of cars a day that travel up and down Milky Way Road that don't live on Milky Way Road. And for some reason, they find a preference to hit Sunset at the quick, at the Speedway than at the pro-healthcare center or over on Guthrie. I mean, I've had, people tell me, people from where my children go to school, yeah, we did, we say, do you live in there? Well, we live way down Lawnsdale and then get down Guthrie and behind, over there. But they find it a better road to travel than one of the county trunks. So when you get back to Nimby, what I wanna know is, how much traffic is actually going to come down Milky Way? Cause I'll bet you quite a bit of it. And, you know, we talk about making suggestions, I'd like to have a guy standing there with a flag, directing traffic down to 164 and directing it over to the county trunk. But if I was leaving this venue, I would go down Milky Way. At my house, trying to get the address flag right, the road is 22, 24 feet wide, that's it. Which means the flag has to be 21 feet back into the trees, but that's another matter. Um, I have a couple of questions about the plan of operation that I would like to see addressed. We keep talking about, or we keep seeing a number that is only one event at a time, which seems reasonable to all of us considering the size of the venue. Can you show us, Sean, where the driveway is compared to Milky Way?
Where the driveway for the operation is?
Yes, yes, I mean, well, no, but it's Lawnsdale and then I'm wondering how far away.
So here's the driveway for, um.
The venue.
For the event venue.
And Milky Way is directly there.
Right.
Right. So how are you gonna get back to 164 going north if you're going to 94? You're gonna take Milky Way. I mean, come on. Everybody knows that in the room. Everybody here knows that. Anyway, back to events per, at a time. What I wanna know is, as well, in the plan of operation is number of events per day. Cause I'm thinking you can pack in a lot more than one, probably three. So, you know, if you're gonna count traffic, the other thing is talking about the church, talking about the two churches, you know, and I agree with Mr. Porter. Um, you know, I got, I got a lot of reasons to like this venue, but there isn't anybody leaving the Fox River Christian Church drunk, nor the Buddhist temple. So it's, it's not really comparable. And so, you know, I, I would like to know how many events per day are planned. I mean, if it's, if it's one event per day, that changes my opinion a lot. But if it opens at 10, did we hear? So you got an 11 o'clock wedding and a 3 o'clock wedding and then it's. So you've got an eleven o'clock wedding, and a three o'clock wedding, and a seven o'clock wedding. I mean, you've got to do the math on that and figure out what it is. But I think, back to the beginning and all that we've done, is that this Act 67 thing just makes it so hard to measure the intangible things that, what everybody's talking about. And I urge you to find a way, as a group, to measure that. You know, how, I mean, do you, what is the measure? Do you do a poll? Do you do a survey? Do you, what do you do to try to determine an actual metric for that kind of thing? And I think it would be a positive thing for the Miller Group to provide that own metric for themselves in their defense, that people don't care. But I don't know how that, that's one of the main things that you mentioned that everyone talks about, and I know how to measure it. Thank you very much for your time.
Good evening, good. I'm Reverend Georgia from the Buddha Haks'a Temple. It's very rare that monks get up in public.
Very rare.
Does this mean I shouldn't talk? Hello, hello. Okay, we're back online. All right. So first of all, thank you for sitting there and listening to everybody. I think that's, shows an act of compassion. Look, basically for us, we don't want to infringe on anybody's rights. Like you said, the laws are the laws, and we want to follow the laws to the full extent. Now, that man that was before me, I just don't remember his name, he made some pertinent points. The whole thing about the one event per day, if it's one event per day, that's, we're right across the road. So another man said he's the only one that lives on Lawnsdale Road. That's not true. We're just like across the road, basically. We're neighbors. And so that's going to impact us quite a lot. And our suggestions would be, like, if you're going to have three events a day, well, then that's four hundred to five hundred cars, perhaps drunken, no security. Are they going to come into our temple and cause trouble, or do what young people do when they're drunk, you know, the normal stuff? So we need to consider that. So suggestion for that is, is that they need to monitor that with a security service and make sure the cars are going out. And they need to have a responsible drinking etiquette with their, with their customers or clients, whatever you call it, patrons. They need to have a very responsible drinking etiquette. Because at our community, we get a lot of locals coming in for peace and quiet, and we provide that. And we have a lot of activities during the day, particularly meditation sessions, and sometimes we sit for ten hours a day. And any kind of noise affects us. But, you know, if it's their right to have the place, we don't want to argue with that. So we've got to find some kind of compromise. They've got to compromise. We're going to compromise by letting them, like, we don't have a choice, if they suit all the criteria and they move in, then we've got to compromise and just take it on the chin. But are they going to compromise with us and understand that there's a Buddhist community center right across the road with a group of monks? We've been there for over twenty years. We have a very strong standing in the local community. We have a lot of, we've got the University of, the Carrow University students come to us regularly, high schools, primary schools. We've got a lot of kids, we've got a lot of people coming to us for peace and quiet and refuge. So, a suggestion for that is, what's the compromise? Again, like the intelligent man mentioned before, how do you measure this? How do you get a tangible, like, how do you deal with this? We're not sure. Like, we're pretty frightened about all this. And the last thing I'll say is, well, it's probably the second last, is when you've got a hundred and fifty cars leaving at midnight, you know, three nights a week, or at eleven o'clock at night, you know, five nights a week or four nights a week, and they're probably drunk, like, us being across the road, like, how do you, like, there's no police, we know. It's very rural, that's part of the reason we're there, because we love rural places and we love to meditate in quiet places. So how do you, like, what do you do, how do you monitor that? Like, how do you control that? Like aggression, alcohol, violent acts? What about the drugs that comes with it as well? I mean, we don't want to talk about that, but that's reality. So, do we want drugs in the community as well? And I would suggest that the patron, that the center here needs to consider that seriously and not just brush that under the carpet, because alcohol does induce drug behavior as well, marijuana, all those other things that come along with that. Right? With loud music, comes along a lot of things that we're bringing into the community that we're trying so hard not to have in our community, why we want to live there. So these are, like, how do you measure these factors? This is substantial evidence, but it kind of borders on the subjective, yes, but it can be substantive, once it occurs, then it's substantial evidence. But then, the permit's been approved, and now we have substantial evidence where people are getting intoxicated and doing all kinds of, but now we can't do anything about it. So that's a bit silly. You know, that's not responsible planning. So, we need to look at this law, and again, I don't want to restrict anybody moving in, and I want the law, everybody, to have the right to have whatever they want in America, that's fine. But here, this is a very tricky, I mean, it's very subtle, but it's very tricky. It's not clear. There's no clarity here, so we need to, there's a lot of gray areas. So, yeah, so the impact from the noise is just not from the music inside, which will affect us. But if that's the law, then we'll take that on the chin. But like many people have said, it's what happens after and before, and how is that monitored? I mean, you know, like, if it's going to be a party zone and people are coming, and it's not just weddings, it's birthday parties and all those kind of things, and then the before and after, and if you've got four events a day, come on, that's the picture we're looking at. All right? So, you know, it might not, so suggestions is, I would, I would say that they need to have a responsible security service there, for sure, because I want to feel secure that they're taking care of the community and the people in, that are coming and going from there, and that there is no spread of any kind of antisocial behavior, aggressive behavior, violent behavior, because that's in their best interest to have that kind of enforcement somehow. And it's responsible for them to do that for their patrons and for people living adjacent. So that would be the strongest suggestion. In terms of the noise, how, like, how are they going to monitor the noise before and after? So, they need to show me, I think, reasonable evidence that they're going to handle this quite well, they're going to manage this, that it doesn't spill over into the neighborhood, you know, especially on a Saturday night, you know, when people are leaving at twelve o'clock at night, who says they're not going to fester in the local areas for an hour or two? And then maybe, you know, down six months, there'll be a kebab shop open up, and a taco shop down the road, and then a hot dog stand, and then it starts to be a hangout. Is that what we want? I mean, do we think about these impacts? This is what could possibly happen, because I know that if you've got two hundred cars leaving at midnight, and, or at eleven o'clock at night, there's going to be commercial people who are thinking, well, what if I set up a hot dog stand down the road? I can get that business. Because these are things that are going to occur after, so we need to, not that I'm against that, I'm not, but these will occur. This will occur. So then it leads to dramatic impact and change on the local community that we need to study and think about, and stay within the law in a substantial, whatever, what was that, substantial evidence? Well, that comes later. So this law is kind of a bit misleading in a way, really, because substantial evidence comes after the fact. You know, there's no difference, like, oh, this person's going to beat me up, and the police will say, well, you've got to show proof. But how can I show proof? He just threatened me. So then, the person goes into the police station with a black eye and says, see this? The person hit me. Well, then it's, now it's happened. That's substantial evidence. So that's, that just doesn't make any sense. You know? It doesn't make any sense at all. So we need to up, up our intelligence here and just do what's right for everybody, including the people petitioning.
No, what we need to do is follow the law.
Right. And what is it?
Do you have anything new, sir?
No, that's it. No, but that's, I think that's it. Thank you very much.
Thank you. We're going to take a five-minute break.